Humboldt County Children's Author Festival, October 2022. Whereas the Humboldt County Children's Author Festival started in 1975 as a one-time festival to bring well-known authors of children's books to visit local schools and has become a biennial tradition. Whereas on October 20th and 21st, authors will visit 54 schools throughout Humboldt County, including several schools in Eureka, and will host a book sale at the library, where the public can meet all of the authors. And whereas teachers and school librarians prepare students to meet their author, whose visit will promote reading and motivate writing by introducing students to books from a different perspective. And whereas the author festival allows students who may not have the means to visit a bigger community to have access to a variety of professional writers and illustrators beyond the redwood curtain. And whereas, over the years, hundreds of authors have written thousands of books, have chosen to attend this festival for a fraction of their usual speaking fee because, as they have said, they value Humboldt hospitality, the networking opportunities with other authors, and the impressive preparation and engagement by the schools and students. Now therefore, I, Leslie Castellano, on behalf of Mayor Susan Seaman and the Eureka City Council, do hereby commend the work of the many volunteers, supporters, and sponsors who produce this festival. I thank the authors who choose to participate in this event and congratulate the participating schools and students on their engagement, and encourage the community to learn about and support this amazing educational program.
And would you like to say a few words? Any of you? All of you? We'd love to hear from you. There's a microphone right there. Come on, Shirley. You got this.
But I want to, okay. Saturday, October 22nd, from 10 until 2:00. Twenty-three authors will be there. You can buy their books and meet them, sign, they'll sign the books for you. It's a really wild, fun event at the library. You've never heard the library like this before. And it's all ages. It's just great. And the other things are not entirely open to the public, but you will see authors all over town, all over Humboldt County for the next four days.
And we'll take them to the skywalk.
And the skywalk. They've also been invited by the zoo to go on the skywalk, and we'll be taking them there. And they have, we have a banquet at the Carson Mansion, and a potluck, and a meeting, actually reception, you all could come to tomorrow. It is at the Morris Graves Museum from 5:30 to 7:00. So if you'd like to stop by, the authors are meeting each other for the first time, some of them, and meeting the committee, and have a beverage and a snack, come on over. Okay? Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano, would you like to go get in the picture? Should we all?
Let's, let's go get in the picture.
Yeah, there you go.
Come on.
And we'll put Susan right here.
Yep, yes.
Susan made us do this.
Susan a little more than this.
Maybe.
She's a little too much, Sarah.
We're all the most.
Come on in, Anne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have work to do.
I'm excited because they're coming to Eureka High on Friday. Yeah, it's gonna be awesome. Okay, so now is the time for public comment. Before I read that, though, I would like to find, I can't find it, I just had it. Oh, here we go. One minute, Mr. Wilson. I would like to read the decorum statement for our meetings. It's very important that we treat each other with respect. Hand clapping and things like that are just, they make people uncomfortable and it can be intimidating for people that want to share. So I'm just gonna read through these quickly. All persons in attendance at public meetings are requested to observe the following rules of civil debate. We may disagree, but we will be respectful of one another. All comments will be directed to the issue at hand. Personal attacks are unacceptable. Applauding or other displays of approval disapproval are discouraged. So with that, this is the time for the members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes, and I see we have Mr. Wilson. Good evening.
My name is Charles Wilson. I read, well, I used to read a lot. I'd get six inches of mail a day. Steve at the post office 35 years ago would give me a, he gave me the box to put the mail in because there's so much there. But anyway, I like to listen to John Campbell on YouTube. He's an 85-year-old guy. He's 40 years teaching nursing. He's got a PhD. He's not a doctor, but he's been teaching. He's been around a while. So anyway, a couple of days ago, he had, one of his talks, and he pointed out, oh, his own vaccination status. He's taken all the shots and all that kind of stuff. He's taken, gotten the COVID and survived it. And he pointed out Biden had the four shots, and he got infected. Fauci had the four shots, and he got infected. And the head of Pfizer, the CEO of Pfizer, had all four shots, and he got infected. Okay, so the next episode, he, he likes to be very cautious because they threaten him all the time. You know, YouTube and all these nonsense internet type of things there. They like to kick you off if you don't conform to the political game. So anyway, they threatened him to shut him down if he didn't comply with World Health Organization guidelines. Okay, so now Campbell's very cautious on that. He points out exactly where he got every little bit of his quotes and everything that he points out. And it's interesting to see what the nonsense that they're doing on the internet there. Now, the state of California, I understand, recently passed AB 2098, and that classifies anti-COVID medical opinion as unprofessional conduct and subject to discipline by the medical boards. Now essentially, that's your politicians, the lawyers already dictate to the doctors how they can treat people. Now you got the politicians teach, sticking their foot in there to tell the doctors how they can treat people. And they even got another one there that says, "You cannot give information that's SB 1390 prohibits any person entity from making statements that government deems untrue or misleading by any means, including on the internet ads and presumably here. So anyway, the government is changing. We're suffering, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Wilson.
Yeah, this is Genevieve, Genevieve Wilson. Anyway, I listened to all this. My point is tyranny is coming. So we have, I sing you a song, maybe I don't have time, so I sing it this high. Those were the days, my friend. We thought they never end. We sing and dance for every day and day. And those, we live the life we choose. We fight and never lose. Yes, there was the day. La 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 la, la 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 la, la 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 la. And that's part of the song. And also in the song, I always sing that, and then we just have to think that. Because somebody was saying that Chinese police are coming to town to control the Chinese people. That doesn't make sense. Our United States, we have our sovereignty. How can you send Chinese people come here? I'm from Taiwan, but by my point, they say, one country with two systems. It doesn't work for Hong Kong, but don't keep saying that. It's lie to us, and we don't want that. So my point is, they will come here. I think there's one real estate company in New York, and they know all the, they have the Chinese police, they can, if you want to buy a property, you expose yourself with all kind of information. And they will threaten them. If they don't go back to China, they're gonna hurt their relative over there. My point, and I say before, tyranny, we run away from the tyranny. We are defected here, but I'm not, but people do that. So what do we do when the tyranny is here? Then we go to the moon? So that's why I sing this song, is probably familiar. And then another song is the French Revolution. I'll, I'll sing it some other time. And this song is called, like, "Don't Cry For Me, Argentina. Don't Cry For Me, America. I do my best to keep you from tyranny and hatred through persistent love and courage. Then, live liberty and freedom to pursue happiness will be here forever and ever. I promise you, I promise you, dear, leave and follow natural law. Love and freedom for all. Tyranny will fail, love will prevail if all the patriots united and combined. Hallelujah." So I say, "natural law." Because they call me, they send me a postcard. I'm a nurse. They want me to work. And I'm not gonna take the shot. It's already proven, they're not working for anybody. So that's why, natural law, keep yourself healthy, take your vitamin D, and that's it. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Genevieve.
Congratulations to the concert. Nice that it fell onto the same date as the first anniversary of your unconstitutional vax mandate that led to forced inoculations of city employees, or they, you know, left their positions and got laid off or went into early retirement, thanks to your medical tyranny. Also nice that we have a one-party system at this point. Reminds me very much of East Germany and Nazi Germany, that we have one person running for mayor, the Fuhrer, you know, shares the same birthday with the Fuhrer. So it becomes more and more obvious that this is a less and less constitutional country. And as somebody who came from a country of oppression, whose family went through oppression under the Nazis, who then myself experienced socialism for 14 long years behind the wall, I can only warn my fellow Americans to stand up against what's coming. I can only warn my fellow Americans to come out here and speak out. I know there's a large discontent against your policies, but people feel intimidated to stand here, people feel uncomfortable to stand here, people feel the, fear the repercussions. I can tell you one thing or the other about that. So the thing is, you engaged in so much unconstitutionality, it's truly shameful. And we know that one of you up there said she would regret living in a country where there is free speech. That was her last and closing statement in the lawsuit that she lost. So I can only encourage my fellow patriotic Americans to come out and voice their discontent, and do not vote for the Fuhrer, the one and only choice we have for the upcoming mayor election. And to oppose the medical tyranny and the oppression that happens here in our city limits, we all know that this is the center, yeah, of the opioid epidemic here locally. I congratulate you for your shameless self-promotion. Never let a chance for shameless self-promotion go to waste. So I can only hope that more and more people will find the courage, will be driven, to come out here and stand up for their rights. And you might oppress one or the other person, but you can't oppress us all, and it'll come to haunt you, I can guarantee you that. The pendulum always swings back, and as much as people are fed up, they will stand up. There is no doubt about it in my mind. And those that come here and speak out, they should be applauded for utilizing their First Amendment rights. They shouldn't be persecuted and prosecuted. They should be saluted, actually. And so I salute all my fellow Americans that come here and utilize their First Amendment. And I can only wish for you guys that your fate will be merciful on you, and that history will be merciful on you, because your names will be forever attached to the unconstitutional medical tyranny that you engaged in, and into the oppression of free speech, and into the downfall of Eureka, to the opioid crisis, to the needle litter, and the crime wave. Make Eureka safe again. Thank you so much.
Greetings, council members. I hope this month you have been able to walk in the light of the Lord. Many of you know history has a way of repeating itself. I find joy in studying biblical history because it helps remind me that my God is the same yesterday, today, and forever. He is the one factor in my life that is solid and I can count on to never change. In reading His Word, we see God often use prophets to warn His people, and particularly those in power, about the consequences of forgetting God and walking in darkness. We also see through their warnings, they left the people with promise of hope. One mighty prophet was Jeremiah. He preached a lot of doom and punishment. However, his message was ultimately one of repentance and restoration. Through him, God was quick to remind His people that although there would be consequences for their sin, He still had a plan, a plan of redemption. Sending His Son Jesus to die for our sins was the fulfillment of that plan. And we have Amos, who spoke about God's displeasure with injustice in the world. Through his words, he expressed God's anger towards societies that didn't care for the helpless and took advantage of His people. To those who often wondered, "Where is God in all the pain and suffering in the world?" Amos made it clear, "God sees and He will judge." The prophet Isaiah was another who warned the people their continued sin would eventually lead to captivity by their enemies, which it did. But his message also spoke of an ultimate redemption and restoration of His people. The common theme is repeated even now in our day. There is a sin issue and judgment to follow, but God has an answer for it, and His name is Jesus. Why would my message be any different? The prophet David in Psalms 107 gives us the shadow of the sinner's deliverance from a far worse predicament. Through the various trials, he, the awakened sinner discovers his guilt and misery. Having struggled in vain for deliverance, he finds there is no help for him but in the mercy and grace of God. This book expresses a desire for people to thank God for His repeated mercy and deliverance in rescuing them from their troubles. God is the ultimate judge of the people. God is the only one with authority to declare what is right and what is wrong in our world. He is also our Savior. His plan has always been to redeem and save the people. The good news is, as I mentioned at the start, He is the one factor in my life that is solid, and I can count on Him to never change. If He said it, we can believe it. His plan will prevail. Those who are wise will take all this to heart. They will see in our history the faithful love of our Lord. Blessings.
Hello there. Ash Teeter here. Nice to see y'all today. You know, it's been a year since the vax mandate was imposed on your employees, and it was a mistake then. Wanted to encourage you that it's a mistake now. I remember a couple months ago, at Councilmember Castellano's, you know, campaign coming out event, and I spoke to Councilmember Burgele about what it would, you know, what it would take to roll this thing back. And at the time, I believe, you stated that, like, the city was dependent upon the county department, or Department of Health and Human Services, you know, rolling back their emergency. But then I did a records request from the city, and like, it says, "For the effective period," that the policy shall be effective immediately and shall remain in full force and effect until the city manager determines that the local public health circumstances have sufficiently improved to permit the suspension of the policy. So it might understand that it's solely up to the city manager to end the policy on your discretion? So sufficient, what would be sufficient? I mean, this, this here is a chart just off our local dashboard, and it shows about, you know, about a year ago when things were really high, and this is, you know, now it looks pretty significant to me. If I'm gonna pass that over to the city manager, please? So I'm just wondering, is there any specific criteria that, I know you don't speak back to the public during this time, but is there any specific criteria that you could give the public at a later time to what your criteria is to end this, since apparently it's not really up to the council anymore? I mean, we've been, some of us have been coming here for a year and talking to the wrong people about the situation, I guess. Anyways, that's all I got for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ash.
Hi. My name is Pepper Phillips. As Eureka City Council members, by following the COVID mandates, I believe you have failed to comply with sections of the Child Endangerment Law, California Penal Code, California Education Code, California's Constitution Declaration of Rights, the Constitution of the United States, Fourth, Fifth, and Fourteenth Amendments, as well as the Nuremberg Code. Peer-reviewed scientific studies prove harm results due to exposures of all kinds of COVID measures, including your vaccine mandates that you acquired for Eureka City employees. Actively employing hazardous administrative procedures around the COVID mandates, and these included but not limited to COVID vaccine coercion, incentivized vaccines, acquisition, administration, distribution, insertion, or infusion into human bodies, modification, placement, operations, tracking, and use on municipal properties is in breach of the aforementioned laws. If the vaccines are in fact, as some allege now, more dangerous for people than the alleged threat that COVID presented, then all COVID vaccines, protocols, and administrative procedures may be judged as crimes against those who are victims of your policies. You have put your employees in harm's way, whether masks, or testing, or injections. And the city of Eureka, by following such decrees as mandates are not laws, incurred an unknown liability. And worse, you may be actively participating in experimental protocols and medicines that have both present and future calamitous outcomes. To illustrate how dangerous the so-called vaccines are, which is just one indicator of liability, I'm going to be sending you all copies of the nine pages of adverse effects of the Pfizer vaccine. Now Pfizer may have been temporarily granted immunity from lawsuit over COVID protocol or harm caused from the injections. And that liability doesn't count if they have committed fraud. But they may be off the hook in the short run. But the city of Eureka is not off the hook. And new facts come to light daily. And to think, it has only been one year since you, the Eureka City Council, demanded that all city employees subject themselves to an experimental medical treatment with no long-term studies, accepting money to do so, where the manufacturers of those products have no liability, a liability that now rests on the city of Eureka. Thank you.
Once again, I would sit back and watch you guys' facial expressions and body, whatnot, while people are talking, and I'm, again, dismayed and disgusted, especially Scooter Bauer. You know, the least you could do, the least you could do is practice a poker face. I mean, and I mean, it's just, it's beyond me. I spoke on this before, but moving on from that, the last couple weeks have been educational, if nothing else, for it to come out that Ms. Moulton, after publicly stating that her emails are running two to one in favor of the couplet up there, to find out that she only got 49 emails, and only half of them were in favor, and she thought that that counteracted the 900 negative responses to the surveys. It just indicates how out of touch y'all are. And then to find out that, in an interview, our city manager stated that he has stakeholders he has to answer to. And it just made me wonder, if the ECS, the HTA, the county, the parents, the children, and the 90% of the residents of Eureka that oppose that project aren't stakeholders, who are you beholden to, Mr. Slattery? Beyond that, actually, I should feel honored to be here, because I feel like I'm in a microcosm of the late Roman Empire. A self-proclaimed emperor, a bunch of boot-looking senators, all making decisions in total disregard to what the populace wants. The recent $75,000 giveaway and the free concert, which actually cost us a pretty penny, bring to mind the old Latin saying, "panem," since it's, what is it, "seris," translated to bread and circuses. The way that the Roman Empires, the Roman Empire dealt with being out of touch with the populace and the populace being angry and upset, was they provided them with bread and circuses. And I feel like that's what you're doing. You are not responding to what your citizens, to what your constituents want. You're giving away money and handing out so-called free concerts, which I've been trying to find out for two days now, how much we actually paid for that. I mean, from what I could tell, there was at least two dozen law enforcement officers, not just Eureka, but at least four different agencies, all on overtime, out there with drones and jet skis and side-by-sides and bicycles and, I mean, you know, everybody out, everybody that could even justify it was out there playing with their toys on our dime. How much did that free concert cost us?
Thank you, Stephen.
Good evening, Council Pro Tem Mayor, ladies and gentlemen. Last time I was here, I requested that maybe some, one council member or the mayor or somebody could go to local schools and inform them about the opioid crisis and the dangers of the pills that I was talking about. I've been talking to business owners. They're having lots of trouble in their bathrooms with people leaving drugs behind. They usually only find orange caps and not too many needles, just the cap. So I don't know why they're not putting their cap back on their needle. I don't really care. But they are leaving drugs behind. They're so high that they actually leave their drugs behind. They're stealing food, they go in there and eat it, they plug up the toilets. Needle probably went in the toilet, by the way. That's why we got so many plugged up sewer lines. It's a danger to kids. They don't even lock the door. They've told me stories about kids walking in on them while they're in there washing their private parts and such. I don't know what it's funny, what's the damn funny about it?
Laughing.
I didn't say you were laughing. Why do you think I'm talking to you? Anyway, I think you guys need to at least go to the school and warn kids, and, you know, Halloween's coming up, and they've found opioid, like fentanyl, in the nerds candy and Sweet Tarts. And as you know, fentanyl is very, very deadly. I mean, you could touch it and die real fast. Police officers die all the time. They're saved with Narcan or whatever it is that pulls them out of it. Thank God for that. You know, it's not a joke. Kids are in danger. And I urge all parents, don't let your kids to go into any public bathroom. Don't let your kids go to the bathroom by theirself. You never know who's gonna be in there. You know, it's dangerous. There could be a needle in there, there could be drugs in there, they might touch it. Like I said, it's deadly. They touch it, they're gonna die. I'd really like you guys to think about that. On the way up here, drug addicts laying next to the street on turns on I Street, laying right there on the corner by the barbecue place, ask them to get ran over, 100%. My friend works for Il River Transfer, drives a great big tow truck. They've been removing drug-addicted people that live in motorhomes and stuff all at Narke, they're cleaning it up. Anyway, he was hauling a big steel bin, and he was heading north to Eureka by Eureka Car Stereo, and there's a group of, what he described to me was a bunch of meth heads on bicycles, people in their mid-40s on bicycles, and one of them jumped the curb, and this bin sticks out about two feet off the side of the truck. He thought he was gonna kill somebody, but he hit the brakes and hit the horn, and he doesn't know why the guy, I mean, just barely missed him. And then the guy flipped him off. And, you know, it's just a disaster with, with the people. They are people, drug-addicted transits all over Eureka, sleeping on the corner. I mean, 250, I don't think so. Could count that in 10 minutes.
Thank you, James.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Harry Wilcox, and as I've been identified in the Lost Coast outpost, a frequent commentator and attendee at city council meetings. They also implied that I'm rude, obnoxious, and overbearing. Well, if using my First Amendment rights to speak on issues that concern me and the public is being rude, obnoxious, overbearing, label me. But it's funny that Lost Coast Outpost lives under the First Amendment right to free speech, yet they don't want to grant that to the rest of us. I think that what has me the most angry is that not a one of the people from this council or from the staff said a word to them in our defense. There were five of us at that meeting. Our intentions were not to break it up, be rude, or interfere. What our intentions were was to get clear, concise information, to clear, concise questions that we asked. One of those concerns for me has been drugs. My roommate lost her cousin, a 24-year-old boy, who had spent a year in rehab with very strong support. The very week he gets out of rehab, he tries to contact somebody, can't, and on the 24th of September, went out and- And on the 24th of September, went out and self-medicated. They found him on October 3rd. That should never happen to anybody in this city. That should never happen to anybody in this state or county or country. But because we're so busy having concerts and defending things that don't, can't be defended, making turn one-way streets out of two-way streets, those things don't mean crap. What means something is what happens to people's lives when they take and they go get their free needle and their shoot-up kit, and they go out and they use it, and they die. What happens to those people? Their lives are forgotten. Well, I'm not gonna let Rocky's death be in vain. I am gonna fight for this next full year, if I have to, to get some mental health assistance to these people who are in the streets. Just taking them to Semper Vivian for 24 hours does nothing. And the 90-day rehabs, that's just the start. There needs to be long-term, and I'm talking two years or more. Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. Okay, is there anybody else from the public that would like to come forward? Hi. Hey, Ken?
I'm a little short on one end, but I reached the ground just fine. My name is Denise, and I live in Scott Bowers Ward, the fourth ward. And my neighbor is also here. I just wanted to inform Mayor Pro Tem and members of the council of our work that we've been, that we've been doing with Kemayek Place, which is a housing-first organization. We started off with a meeting like we've done in the past with Ageas, and all was well. We were agreed to with certain things such as onsite managership, really involved. And the people that started the program were really involved. And then we noticed some changes in the facility. First off, a police light was put on the premises, which we thought was okay. But with that, they fired the two security guards and the onsite manager. Now, myself and another neighbor had another call meeting discussing this, and they would say that they're working on things and this and that. We are not getting any action. And so we're asking you, Mr. Bauer, what dates are you available to come have a meeting with us to discuss this further and to hold them accountable via their occupancy? You were, I think, from our captain, you were given an email that really summarized our meeting and what we discussed there. So we would like some direct answers. We're really wanting to work with these people. I think it's a great program, but we need to hold them accountable. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Denise.
Hi, I'm Sheila O'Donnell, and I'm also a member of the Bridge District Neighborhood Watch, and I just want to thank you all for your service to our city. Scott, I wanted to mention that we're having a lot of campers at the boat launch, the Samoa Boat Launch. It's turned into an unofficial campground. So you'll have RVs, cars, trucks. I mean, it gets really full. They pull out their lawn chairs, drink, sing, music, you know, I mean, it's just, it's a campground. Now, it did get, they got roustied out for the concert, so that's proof they can get roustied out. And I'm just concerned about their presence there. I feel a lot of empathy for people that don't have a house and a place to live. But the problem with them being there is, you know, it's a boat launch and it's a public place. The bathroom closes at 4:00, and I don't think it opens till 8:00. So they're urinating and defecating right on our bay, and that is not, that's not okay. So I'm hoping, yeah, I mean, I think we've talked a lot, and you guys have worked a lot on possible solutions. I think there has to be a place for them to legally park where they have, you know, a bathroom. So that was, that's one of the things I'd like to talk to you about whenever we can meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to come and comment? Seeing, yes? Seeing someone? Hello?
So, I mean, they made a pretty good point about, you know, say, lack of sanitation, homeless people pooping in the streams, because you have something called the plague. Yeah, so it kind of confuses me a little bit. But then again, this was all just kind of a power grab, so, you know, it's like, oh, we gotta change our whole lives for the sniffles, and then, and then homeless people poop in the rivers. It just kind of doesn't make any sense. Like, what exactly is being done about that? I mean, aside from just ignoring it? I don't, I'm just, you know, curious is all. But, I mean, you know, if you were to have consistency, that would be a priority, you know, versus, you know, helping create the circumstances that led to the plague. I know, I was just sharing. Okay.
So friend, you could certainly reach out to any one of us. So Genevieve, you already had your three minutes, honey.
So I cannot say again, because I have reaction from all this happening.
No, no.
Oh, no problem. Okay, just wish that we are going to be, what's it called?
I don't have a mute button up here, so I can't really mute.
Anyway, we need some, what you call?
Thank you, Genevieve. Appreciate that you're here. And for the young one that just spoke, you could certainly email or reach out to any of us, and we'd be happy to talk to you about that. Okay?
Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak? Please just raise your hand or turn on your video.
Okay. Is there anybody on Zoom that you see? Okay. Seeing no one, we will bring back, we will move on to public hearings. Our first hearing is coastal digital signs, and we have Principal Planner Getz coming forward. May we have a report, please? Would it be helpful to recess for a few moments while you, you've got it?
And you'll have to look on your little screens.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for rolling with it.
So good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Is it showing up on your screen? No.
Not yet. Few technical difficulties will be up in a few minutes. And there it is. Awesome.
But it's not showing up on their screens.
It is. Their little ones are all showing up like that.
Yeah, got it.
Yes. So let me get rid of this.
Sorry, to the chair, I did hear from someone who's on Zoom who wanted to make public comment, but somehow wasn't seen, if it's, sorry.
Okay, well then, as we're working this out, can we go back to that person for a moment?
Yes.
Sorry, we didn't see you.
Amy Jester.
Hi, Amy.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
We can, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. I'm so sorry about that. I missed the moment from non-agenda item to agenda item. So apologies, good evening, council members, mayor, city manager Slattery. I'm Amy Jester, the Director of Policy Advocacy and Civic Leadership with Humble Area Foundation and the Wild Rivers Community Foundation, where I have the pleasure of working on a new program being incubated there, which is the Redwood Region Climate and Community Resilience Hub, or the CORE Hub. Tonight, I'm-
Excuse me, Amy, is this about an agenda item? I believe it is. Yeah, so we're, we're doing public hearings now, so this is not the time to comment on this item.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You betcha.
That's okay, thank you.
Thank you. Principal Planner Getz.
Lots of clicking to get there. So good evening again, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. As you mentioned before, you tonight is the Coastal Digital Signs Amendment, and this amendment applies to the coastal portion of the city as shown here on the colored parcels. The amendment will prohibit new digital signs in the coastal zone portion of the city. And when the commission acted on the 2020 coastal sign ordinance at their meeting in July, the Coastal Commission recommended the city consider prohibiting new digital signs within the coastal zone. When this information was relayed to council, council indicated they might be accepting of such a prohibition. Since we were working on the June 2022 Annual Zoning Code Update, we decided to add a prohibition on new digital signs for the inland portion, which is the next item on your agenda, and also process this text and local coastal program amendment to prohibit them in the coastal zone. Staff recommends that you hold a public hearing and waive reading, read by title only, and introduce Bill Number 1019CS to prohibit new digital signs in the coastal zone. I do have a suggested motion whenever you're ready, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? Seeing none, we will, at this time, I will open the public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council regarding this item? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Do I just jump in on Zoom?
I can't see you, so I'm not-
Jeff Willis.
Jeff Willis? Hi, Jeff.
Hey, how you doing?
Welcome.
Uh, thank you. So, my name's Jeff. I live in Arcata on signs in Eureka. And I've met with a couple council members on this, just found out about this. And I'm strongly, strongly urging you not to do this. I do not understand why this item is even brought before us. We spent a lot of time on our new sign code update, specifically on digital signs, looked at where they fit in our city, looked at where they don't fit. And after a lot of research and a lot of effort by previous staff, we've, we basically carved out a section of Eureka where they're still acceptable to be used, and it was a good compromise between those that don't want them and your local businesses that do want them. Removing these completely is just, it's not something that's gonna help our city. I do not understand what we're doing here. All these signs, every single sign in the city of Eureka that's digital signs purchased by a local business. Local businesses are using these because they don't have brand recognition like a Sportsman's Warehouse. So when you have RMI Outdoor on Broadway and Sportsman's Warehouse on Broadway, RMI needs to get out to the public what they are, because they don't have brand recognition. So if we ban these, then we're just handicapping our local businesses, trying to go up against big box stores. We already have these signs go through the most stringent permit process. They're extremely expensive signs, so they're, they're not gonna, you know, be prolific and be on every corner. I just, I, I see no reason why this is the issue that our city council is taking right now. So I've also submitted, I hope you guys saw it, a petition with 364 signatures of local residents that are opposing this ban. And I urge you to take that into consideration. I really urge you to think about not handicapping our local businesses and give us a fighting chance to make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to comment? I'm sorry, I can't see who's on Zoom.
No, I'm looking. Raise your hand if you want to comment. No.
No. Okay, so with that, if there's no further comment, I'll close the public hearing. Council, is there any further discussion or emotion? Go ahead. I'm sorry, Councilmember Bauer.
City manager Slattery, in order to comport with, I mean, the Coastal Commission voted right to basically make digital signs a non-conforming structure in the coastal zone, what was the most recent vote that they undertook?
So that was brought back to you and council. That was what you guys approved at the previous meeting. And it put certain regulations that we drafted well over nine, 10 months ago, and it was in the processing process for that period of time. Then it went to council. At that council meeting, they added the dark sky ordinance, and they added some other minor changes, but at that time also recommended that they wanted a consideration of a ban of signs in the coastal zone. And that's how it was brought back to you guys, and that was discussed at the previous council meeting as well.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Royo or emotion?
Well, I think that the indication that the Coastal Commission gave us makes perfect sense to me in the coastal zone. But all of Eureka is really a coastal city, and we, you know, we have, we have high degrees of traffic collisions. Now, the data seems to be a little bit all over the place when it comes to the distractions that digital signs are proven to cause or not proven to cause, sometimes because of studies developed by the sign industry. So I think it's a little challenging to sort through some of the data. What I do know is that, you know, we have a lot of sensitive species in our region. We have, you know, we're a city by the bay with a really important bird flyway and migratory pathway. We have a lot of needs to protect our natural resources, and I think about that when I think about the dark sky provisions that the Coastal Commission put forward. So, you know, I, I think we've been through this a few times before in my time on the council. I've certainly given, you know, reasoning and many more words than I will use tonight for why I think, you know, more restrictions on digital signs are in line with my views for the development of our community. But I'd love to hear what others think. I support limiting the number of digital signs, and I think we already have a lot of them. So I've heard from a lot of community members in the past when this issue came forward, that there was, you know, a desire to retain the historic character of our community to the extent possible and to, you know, limit digital signs for the reasons I already stated. So those are some of my initial thoughts, but I'd love to hear from others.
Councilmember Costellano.
Well, and I just, just for the clarification of the public, and, you know, we have two items on our agenda that address digital signs. This, this item is specific to those in the coastal zone. And then the next item on the agenda will address digital signs that are kind of more in other parts of Eureka. I think there's been, you know, the, I think if, the comments have kind of indicated both of the agenda items at once, I think, in some way. So I just wanted to make that clear for anyone from the public who's listening right now. And so I think, you know, personally, much of our coastal zone especially is, you know, historic and, you know, near the waterfront, as implied in the name. You know, and so for that, I do support, you know, not continuing forward with digital signs in that zone. I think that, you know, when I walk around Old Town or in that area, I think that that kind of speaks to the, you know, the unique, you know, it's the cultural arts district. I think there's a lot of opportunities for other kinds of creative signs other than digital signs in the coastal zone.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Thank you for that reminder. I think because our comments-
I think because our comments went that way, I was like, whoa, I'll just jump right into that. So, great reminder. So we were talking about the coastal digital signs. And so I'll move that we waive reading, read by title only, and introduce Bill Number 1019 Tax CS to amend the Text of Eureka Municipal Code Title 10, Chapter 5, Article 17, Signs, and Article 22, Non-Conforming Uses Structures and Signs to Prohibit Digital Signs in the Coastal Zone.
And I'll second that. And I'll second that because of the comments that were made and because of the public outreach I've received over the last, I can't even remember how many years it's been now, six, eight, that we've been talking about this. And so, you know, this has been really a hot topic for a long time, and I support the idea that we need to maintain the integrity of our Old Town and our coastal region. So, ready to vote? Ready to vote?
Do you all understand this has nothing to do with Old Town, this vote?
So Jeff, you spoke for your public comment, so you can certainly comment on the next item if you care to. Thank you.
Katie, how's your vote?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Motion passes.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, Councilmember Molton, I didn't see you up there. Okay, thank you. All right. So we are going to next be talking about our June 2022 zoning code update. May we have a report, please? Principal Planner Getz.
Absolutely. So this is the fourth modification of the text amendment that adopted the current zoning code. And it applies to the inland portion of the city as shown here on the colored parcels inside the blue line. These proposed amendments continue to rectify inconsistencies and errors in correct grammar and also clarify language that is currently unclear, contrary, or confusing. The amendments are attended to and do maintain and ensure internal consistency throughout the zoning code itself. Changes of note are adding language to allow tiny houses on wheels as accessory dwelling units in residential zones, continuing to refine the language for tree removal, allowing exterior lights for balconies and upper floor decks and stairs to exceed the 16-foot height limitation, requiring EV charging stations pursuant to the building code requirements instead of the numbers that were in our code, requiring property owner signatures on all applications, changing the approval and noticing process for minor use permits, minor infill incentives, and minor variances, and for the non-conforming updates triggered when a project's construction value is $50,000 or more. We're also proposing to add exclusions for solar system installations and, when not part of a larger project, ADA accessibility and EV charging station additions. We're also proposing to add short-term bicycle parking to the list of required non-conforming upgrades and clarifying language for damage, destruction, and demolition of non-conforming buildings, and finally prohibiting new digital signs. Staff recommends that you hold a public hearing and introduce Bill Number 1020CS to adopt the June 2022 zoning code update. And I do have a suggested motion when you're ready, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have questions from council? Councilmember Costellano.
So, and it's sort of a question and a answer too. Just, just, I just want to make sure that the, the public knows that this is the portion if you want, if, so, you know, before we're talking about signs only in the coastal zone, and now this is talking about signs in other areas where digital signs would normally be permitted.
Correct.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I too have a question. Did you have a question? So could you just speak more to this, the tiny houses on wheels and what that would look like in residential areas? Does that mean the town's going to have residential little houses all over, or?
Potentially.
Potentially. So could you speak more to how that works and how it would impact neighbors?
Sure. So what we're proposing is that tiny houses on wheels be allowed in residential zone districts. They would be temporary accessory dwelling units, and they would be required to be street legal, so they could be moved to various locations, either in town or taken to some other town or moved out into the county if they're allowed there. The, there is a requirement for an annual tiny house permit because we kind of want to keep track of where they are and who's, who owns them and that kind of thing. So we will be bringing back a fee for a really simple annual permit for those. Other than that, there's some requirements in there for the way that they look when they're on the property, kind of similar to how maybe a manufactured home might look, those kinds of requirements for them.
Okay. So just a couple more clarifying questions. So would they be parked on the street or on someone's property? And then secondly, if you could clarify, what would the difference be between this and a motor home? People living in motor homes?
It's the difference between the way that the vehicle is classified. So temporary, or excuse me, tiny houses on wheels will either need to be classified through the state or they will have to be inspected to residential building standards. Recreational vehicles come under a different law with the state, and there are regulations for, in our code, for those to be located generally in recreational vehicle parks. There are some, there is some ability to temporarily use them on a site, like when they're constructing a new residential structure and they want to live in the RV while they're doing that construction, those kinds of things. But generally, long-term, living in an RV on private property or outside of RV park isn't allowed.
Thank you. And then again, the clarification about the street parking?
They will be on the site.
On the site. Great, thank you. Do you have any further, Councilmember Costellano?
Thank you. Just curious, you know, if someone was interested in having a tiny house on wheels on their property, are there kind of resources where people could find out, like, how to build one? Or, you know, sort of what the structure might have to be like?
So there are some regulations that we're proposing in the code as far as size and width and height and that kind of thing. Certainly, internet would be a great place to check for those kinds, that kind of information. I'm sure that there's a number of possibilities out there for them.
Councilmember Arroyo.
I really appreciate the provisions about how they will be constructed. I think that was really well done. I just wanted to note that, I guess I had a question about the setback element. So when I picture where many of these will go, sure, it has to be on the site. For many people, that might be their driveway. Is that, but that will, could pose limitations to their use if we require the setback. Is there any way that we can deal with that differently? It's, let's see, it's section, oh, you're good.
I think, I think one of the things that we would probably not want to do is block access to existing off-street parking. If the off-street parking is there, we're hoping that folks are going to use it, save some space on, on the street for, on-street parking. We'd be happy to look at some other scenario. I'm just trying to think of, you know, maybe removing the limitation on not allowing them in the front of the house. That could be a possibility. I think, given the size of the, the tiny houses, generally, there's probably going to be enough room between a lot of houses and a fence or a side yard to be able to get them into the back or onto the side. Not all of them certainly, but while I hope that this idea takes off and that a lot of people participate, I kind of think too that there's not going to be a ton of them to start with.
I mean, I guess my, if we wanted to continue having conversation about this tonight, I guess my question is, can we waive that requirement, given that, I mean, I realize it's going to be connected to utilities, so it's not really that mobile. So we can't say that it's mobile and therefore shouldn't meet those setback requirements. But I do think if we want to increase this as a housing stock amplifier, that, that we might want to consider both allowing them to exist in driveways and if we can, waiving any setback requirements. I don't know if that's something we have the ability to do safely, given like that setbacks are often about preventing fire.
That's correct. It's a safety issue usually. And if you're the person on the other side of the fence from where this tiny house is going to be, maybe having it four feet away from your property line on the other side is a good thing.
Thank you. Councilmember Molton.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, just to answer the question or ask the question about the digital signs in this piece that we're talking about. You said specifically no new digital signs. Is that correct?
That's correct. There would be no new digital, digital signs other than those that were required to be allowed by state law or required for regulatory reasons.
So the existing digital signs that are already in place outside of the coastal zone would just stay there? There's no problem with those, right?
They would become non-conforming signs, meaning that they were legally installed but no longer complied with the zoning code, and they would be subject to the non-conforming regulations in our code. And so, yes, they could be allowed to continue, they could be repaired, they could be replaced if they were damaged, that kind of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bauer and then Costellano.
I just had a quick question. Was it page five? Vacation rentals, it says, "Proposed change add pending." So I think that just means, right, we're going to discuss that at another time. Because I know we've been talking about vacation rentals quite a bit, but I think we're still not there yet, right?
I'm sorry, which?
Just the, what is it? Ordinance Section 30. Just under "Proposed Change." I think it just means, I just want to clarify that we're going to revisit that, something that we can do.
I would read that as meaning we're adding that word.
Yes. We're adding pending. Okay.
Yeah, so that's under the variances section.
Okay.
As opposed to vacation rentals. So what that is, is we're changing the way that we notice when a minor variance has been acted upon by the city manager. We're going to send out a notice before he actually takes the action. So it's a notice of pending action.
Perfect. Okay.
And to answer your question, yes, we've done our, we have an inventory of the short-term vacation rentals right now. We've sent out letters for those that weren't in compliance. And once we get that all up to speed and make sure that we're set as far as building inspections and permitting and all of those things, we'll be coming back with some options for short-term rentals.
Thank you.
Councilmember Costellano.
Thanks. I am wondering if Principal Planner Getz can speak to, just a, sorry, a process question related to the zoning code update. Because partially, and just a little backstory to this, you know, I asked earlier, like, okay, well, you know, we have this zoning code before us. You know, there's been a public process and noticing around it. And so in order to change it, we would have to kind of, substantially, we'd have to go through that again. And just, can you speak to, like, if we were to adopt this tonight, and let's say, you know, we're trying out some things, like, you know, tiny houses on wheels, when would the zoning code come before us again? That, let's say we wanted to make some changes, things didn't go so well, or, or we, you know, innovated something, when would we have an opportunity to look at some of these things again?
So we can bring a zoning code update to you at any point in time, either when council asks us to or as staff if we're experiencing issues or difficulties with enforcement of the code or, you know, something's just really needing to be fixed. We can bring that to you through the Planning Commission at any point in time. I think what we were talking about earlier today was specifically in relation to digital signs and if there was going to be some idea of, as opposed to doing a ban on new digital signs or prohibiting new digital signs, some other option, maybe a cap or allowing a certain type of digital sign kind of thing, that would potentially trigger us having to come back to you with at least that part of it. The other thing too is that we do an annual update of the zoning code, and we also update anytime that state law requires us to make changes to it. So the last update we did was in January of 2022 when the laws changed. And then this is our mid-year annual update for you. It's just taken us this long to get it to you.
Further questions? Councilmember Arroyo.
I'm not fully tracking on this piece about the solar systems. Could you clarify what's changed there?
As far as the-
Well, I'm seeing a change to the applicability, like that it's not the section, here, section 424 is not applicable. Where else does it talk about solar systems? In our-
In relation to the-
So I think what you're referring to, and please correct me if I'm misinterpreting what you're talking about, when someone proposes to do a project on their property and the value of that project is $50,000 or greater, there's a list of things that we need to check as planners that they are up to date on. So that they have solid waste facilities or that their vision clearance areas actually exist and comply with the requirements, parking lot landscaping, parking lot striping, those kinds of things. So one of the things that's been happening is that installation of solar systems, as well as ADA and electric vehicle charging stations, have been triggering that $50,000 upgrade so that they're having to do, in addition to what they're proposing, these other upgrades. And so what we're proposing in this amendment is to exempt those kinds of projects when that's all they're doing. Now, if they come to us and they're doing a solar system and an ADA ramp and a charging station, they're still going to get triggered for the other upgrades, as an example.
Okay, thank you. So these are, yes, that makes perfect sense to me. So we're not going into any of the provisions for people installing solar. We're just saying that doesn't, that doesn't count towards your $50,000.
Doesn't trigger the $50,000 requirement, correct?
Thank you very much.
And to give some background on that, we've had applicants that are trying to do, I'm not going to say granola groovy, but more environmentally friendly practices. And when they come in and do these things, they're being sticker shocked by, oh, I have to trigger all these others. So it's a way to incentivize folks doing EV charging stations, solar panels, and ADA requirements are required. But it's to help, it's to incentivize those things.
Any further questions from council? Okay, seeing none, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to adjust, would anybody like to address the council regarding this item? Is there anybody on Zoom? No? Okay. Seeing none. We'll bring it back to council for discussion and emotion. Councilmember Arroyo.
I have a question. Just, I'm surprised that the person who was commenting before didn't stay on. Are we sure that, just because we can't see them, okay.
Amy Jester?
Oh, no, Mr. Willis.
He's, no, he's here. Okay.
I'm still here.
Okay, I-
Is it public comment now?
The public hearing is open, yes. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, I'm going to keep it brief because I already spoke before. I'm not going to waste my efforts there. But it really is concerning that you guys don't even understand the areas that you're voting on. To hear you guys talk about Old Town and waterfront when banning digital signs in the- To hear you guys talk about Old Town and waterfront when banning digital signs in the coastal zone, when you're literally not voting on them being there because they're not allowed to be there already. You know, before you guys come to these meetings, I would just suggest you actually read the codes that you're going to vote on.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Is anybody else on there, on Zoom?
No.
No. Okay. So then with that, we're going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council for your comments or emotion. Councilmember Castellano.
Sure, I'll make some comments. So firstly, thank you for this very thorough update of the zoning code. And then, you know, generally, I appreciate it. I could, you know, with the digital sign ordinance in particular, I did, you know, send Principal Planner Gatz questions about, you know, well, what if we put a cap on digital signs? Or, you know, made it to where they had to be artistic digital signs or something like that. You know, so I could imagine kind of like pulling that section and bringing it back or just instructing staff to revisit that the next time we update it, which I think would be kind of the most efficient to the process and, you know, appreciative. You know, I know there's a lot of things on staff's radar, you know, that could also give us time to look at, you know, to get more feedback from people in terms of people who are wanting to install, implement these, you know, and now not able to do so. So that was, you know, kind of where I was at with the digital signs in particular. Everything else I felt pretty in kind of just clear agreement with.
Councilmember Bauer?
No, I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember Castellano, because I was wondering, kind of something along those lines. Can we regulate the time that they're on? I mean, I know schools have these marquees now that are digital signs. I think they probably consider them pretty effective when communicating with teachers and whatnot. But could we say, you know, they have to go off at ten o'clock because I drive by the Eureka High one, it's pretty bright? And if I were living next door, I'd probably be like, I hope that thing goes off at a decent time. So I agree with a deeper thought process to that. But at the same time, I agree, we should move on and come, maybe revisit it at a later time.
So just for informational purposes, the county, the state, school districts, they can put up what they want. They don't need to conform with our code. So, and same thing with regulatory agencies that were brought up by Principal Planner. You know, they can, we could tell them and request it to happen, but they would not have to comply with what we request.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Principal Planner Gatz, could you explain why we're talking about the signs? Why we were previously talking about the signs in the coastal zone? I know we're not on that item, but just to clear up any confusion about whether they were already forbidden in the coastal zone.
So we have two different zoning codes. One applies to the inland portion of the city and the other applies to the coastal zone portion of the city. So anytime we want to make changes to both of them, we have to do two amendments to them. So the first one was by itself is a public hearing, and now the zoning code update, which includes the changes to the digital signs is before you.
Okay, thank you. So when we were talking before about Old Town and the coastal parts of the city, we were talking about the coastal zone. Great. Well, I really applaud staff's effort on all of this, and I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to waive reading, read by title only, and introduce bill number one zero two zero tax CS and ordinance of the City of Eureka, amending portions of Eureka Municipal Code, Chapter one fifty-five for the June twenty twenty-two zoning code update.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Can we have a vote, please? Oh, Councilmember Castellano?
I just want to encourage, you know, members of the business community and members of the public to reach out with us. You know, I think it's highly probable that, you know, within the next, it's almost guaranteed that within the next six months, you know, the zoning code will come back before us. And so there's opportunities to kind of engage and have, I think, a more thoughtful conversation around how digital signs may be possible or, you know, maybe creative digital signs. And so I just want to encourage, you know, communication through the process. And yeah, that's where I'm at for now.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, let's vote.
Councilmember Moulton?
Aye.
All ayes unanimous, motion carries.
Great. All right, thank you. So moving on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted in one motion. Did I miss one? Oh, my gosh, goodness. I'm sorry, I have a script tonight, and so it was not on my script. So, thank you. So if we could bring forward the housing element, Principal Planner Gatz.
Happy to do that for you. So, good evening again, third time tonight. Before you tonight is the, an amendment to the City of Eureka twenty nineteen twenty-seven housing element. And at our joint meeting with the Planning Commission on September twenty-ninth, I noted we are proposing to change our reliance on accommodating the majority of our arena from non-site-specific lots to site-specific vacant and non-vacant lots. We're also proposing revisions to the list of city-owned sites and bringing the total number of units anticipated to be developed through the RFP process to three hundred and thirty instead of three hundred and two. Other than those changes, we've updated the numbers for how many dwellings have been created since two thousand nineteen, provided new methodology for the newly listed city-owned sites, talked about changes that we've made to our zoning code as a result of new state laws, as well as ongoing efforts to streamline and improve our code, just like we voted on a few minutes ago. And interestingly, we've argued our case to be allowed to use lots that are less than a half acre in size because state housing law says if you have a parcel that's less than half an acre or more than ten acres in size, it's not suitable for housing development. So given all of the changes that we've made in the housing element, how are we going to accommodate our arena? We've identified vacant lots that can accommodate seven hundred and twenty-six dwellings and non-vacant lots that can accommodate fifty-one dwellings. With the city-owned sites providing three hundred and thirty dwellings, that means we actually exceed our total arena by a hundred and fifty-five dwellings. On October tenth, twenty twenty-two, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and adopted a resolution recommending the city council adopt the amendment. They also made four recommendations, three of which would not affect the housing element, and one recommendation to require additional bicycle parking spaces be secured and/or covered to qualify to be used for reductions to residential parking standards. The commission then unanimously recommended with one commissioner absent that council adopt the amendment to the housing element. So staff recommends that you hold a public hearing and consider and accept the Housing Element Amendment Addendum to the General Plan Environmental Impact Report, adopt the twenty nineteen twenty-seven Housing Element Amendment by resolution, and direct staff to forward the Housing Element Amendment to the Department of Housing and Community Development for certification. And I do have a motion when you're ready, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Principal Planner Gatz? I can't see Councilmember Moulton.
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Arroyo?
I am curious, based on some public feedback I received, whether it is feasible to include in this, at this stage of the process, an elimination of parking requirements. So instead of having more options to just have there not be parking mandated.
Sorry. So are you, are you asking if we can change the zoning code to not require the parking?
You're right, this was about a different item. I had made a note of it, thinking that it was related to this item, and I messed up. So that ship has sailed. Dang it. Okay, well.
We can make a note of that for the next
For the next one, yes. My apologies. Okay, I'll regroup and think about if I have any other questions.
Great. Are there any other questions from council? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Is anyone here for a public comment, to comment on this item? No? On Zoom? I just lost my script. Nope? All right, oh, there it is. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for a motion or comments. Councilmember Bauer?
I move that the city council adopt a resolution to accept the Housing Element Amendment Addendum to the General Plan Environmental Impact Report and adopt the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-seven Housing Element Amendment and direct staff to forward the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-seven Housing Element Amendment to the Department of Housing and Community Development for certification.
I'll second. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Are there any? Councilmember Castellano?
Well, thanks again for this. This is, this whole agenda has been a heavy lift from a planning perspective. And I just appreciate that in many cases throughout this updated housing element, we're actually exceeding state requirements. And in some ways, I think, you know, later when some of these intended projects go, you know, go out for RFP, we'll have the capacity to kind of play a little bit with, you know, with what those RFPs might look like or RFQ, anyway, one of those. And, you know, and I am hopeful, you know, I know that, you know, I had sent this note earlier, you know, just that there's more, you know, we continue to just keep our eyes out for more transitional options, you know, for people who, you know, because a lot of these developments are going to take a while to actually, you know, fund and get built and implement. And so I do think that, you know, I think that's kind of like threaded in here, but also that's just something that's on my mind of, you know, what are the transitional options that we can help to implement.
Thank you. Further comments? Seeing none, proceed to vote.
Councilmember Moulton?
Aye.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. So now, moving forward on our script to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted in one motion. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. However, if discussion is required, that item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. So would anyone like to pull anything from the consent calendar? Councilmember Arroyo?
I would like to pull item F eight, as I know that we had someone who would like to speak to this, so. So no reason not to pull it.
Great. Okay, anyone else? Okay, so can we get a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Some moved.
With the exception of F eight? Great. I'll second that. Please vote.
Aye.
Great.
Sorry, unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. So let me just find F eight. It'll just be a second here. Because again, that's not on my script.
I actually do have a question. It's a process question. I would hate for it to do any damage if I didn't ask. So I have been involved with the Core Hub with my, I realize I probably shouldn't have been the one to pull the item. I've been involved with the Core Hub with my RCAA hat on, and so I think I should probably recuse myself on this item just out of an abundance of caution. So I will do that.
Always welcome if you think it's appropriate.
Okay. And CD Attorney Luna, is it okay that I have pulled the item? And then, okay.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
You're going to recuse yourself.
I'll recuse myself now. Sorry for the confusion on my part.
Thank you. And so bringing this item forward, we're going to be having a presentation about Core Hub and North Coast Offshore Wind Community Benefit Networks, Recommendations for Community Benefits. And who is giving that report?
I can start it, and we'll go to quick. It'll be very quick. So this process started months ago. They reached out to city staff to provide some input. Unfortunately, staff haven't been able to attend all of these meetings, but we've been kept abreast of what's going on. This is being brought forward in support of the community, CBA, Community-Based Agreement. Basically, it's an agreement that comes together for when people lease the area out in the ocean for the wind energy farm. There's certain community benefits that can be realized from that. And so group got together, a lot of local interested parties, including the tribes, the Harbor District, the municipalities, the county. Obviously, Humboldt Area Foundation was hired to lead this project. And there's many meetings to establish what that community-based agreement would look like and what that potential funding could be used for. And so this is a letter in support of establishing that and the work that they've been doing. And I would hope that in the near future, because this is only going to be public comment for three minutes, but in the near future, there'll be something coming back to council to give you more specifics about what this looks like and what the process will be to distribute that funding. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? I have a question. So if it's coming back, is this letter, so this letter is something that is an initial portion of the process?
Yeah, so it really got expedited today. There was, I want to call it an offering, I forget what they call it. But basically, they put it out to advertisement that this property is being leased by the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, I think is BoM. And so they just put it out, I think, December sixth, proposals are due. And this is a way of supporting the work that the Core Hub has done to try and establish some funding that would be a result of the lease of that property out in the ocean.
Any further questions? Councilmember Moulton, do you have any questions?
Sorry, no, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. So with no more questions, we'll bring that up to public comment. I know that we have Amy Jester here. Did you want to, that's why you're here, right? Amy? Oh, you're muted, it looks like.
Any public comment on Zoom?
I, I, I don't think she knew it was going to get pulled. So I think she was thinking that she might just wait and come back later. I'm not sure. I see her on Zoom, but I don't know that she's still, you know, like paying attention.
Staff is recommending that you guys, it's just a support letter for the process that's been going on. We'll definitely make sure that we have representatives from Core Hub come back and give a more in-depth presentation on what they've been doing and what they're going to be asking of as a part of that CBA agreement.
Okay. Councilmember Bauer?
And I'm happy to report at some point, from the perspective of Redwood Coast Energy Authority, you know, the call is what is called, it's called a call when they, when they put out the leases, lease potential for certain areas. And the community benefits, I think it's an agreement. Anyways, it's a really cool thing for the community that, you know, we realize a benefit beyond, you know, having wind turbines out there. It provides a lot of really good opportunities and funding for our local communities. So we can talk about that when it happens. But supporting it, I'm fully in favor of that, a letter of support.
Well.
Offering sounds so much better than call, though.
Because there was no public comment, we're bringing it back for comments and discussion and a motion? Councilmember? Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, I, I support this. There are a number of organizations have signed on. So I think it would be meaningful for the City of York to be amongst those. I think there's going to be some sort of press release going out later this week, you know, of all the signers. And, you know, I'm on the board of REDEC, as folks know, and REDEC is one of the signers as well. So, you know, we would be, you know, amongst many other community organizations.
Wonderful. So did you want to follow that with the motion?
Yes, I, you know, this one was added on late.
Excuse me just one moment.
We do have one public comment, it looks like.
Okay.
If we could, okay. Latonya?
Hi.
Hi, Latonya, are you there?
It looks like you're on mute.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just was submitting something, like, you know, that I'm planning to come back, a lot of the areas do plan to come back. And I gave my, my information, just confirmed my information, so the same. And I do most of it, my additional comments and email. Thank you regarding this meeting. Thank you. In the message.
Thank you, Latonya. Councilmember Castellano?
I'll move staff's, staff's recommendation.
I'll second. Please vote.
Aye.
Unanimous vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so.
Just to repeat that for the record, it would be four yes votes. Councilmember Arroyo absent, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Legislative Action Correspondence. Are there any correspondence items that council would like to add at this time? No, great. So moving forward to reports and action items, Coastal Land Use Plan Report by Principal Planner Kristen Kenyon.
Hi, hi, council. Let me share my screen. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Great. All right, this is the second in a series of reports staff will be giving to council on the ongoing Coastal Land Use Plan Comprehensive Update. So to recap, the land use plan is one of two parts of our local coastal program. And staff is proposing that the new land use plan or LUP be a standalone element of our 2040 general plan called the Coastal Element. And it will include relevant portions of other 2040 general plan elements and additional policies and maps necessary to carry out the California Coastal Act. And staff is recommending that it be organized into six chapters. And tonight, we're bringing a draft of the Public Access and Recreation Chapter to council for review and comment. So to keep in mind as we review the draft plan, it only applies in the coastal zone. It doesn't apply in inland areas of the city. It's gonna end up being, along with our coastal zoning code, the standard of review for coastal development permit applications. So in the future, when somebody wants to do development in the coastal zone, we'll be reviewing that development to see if it's consistent with these policies. And like I said before, this is a portion of the general plan, so it's supposed to have broad policies that are gonna remain relevant for a 20-year planning horizon. Whereas the coastal zoning code will have the more specific details to it. And we're planning on bringing an update to that to you once we get this coastal land use plan update completed and submitted to the Coastal Commission. And finally, this document must conform to the California Coastal Act because it has to be certified by the Coastal Commission to become effective. So the draft Public Access and Recreation Chapter was included in your agenda packet. And it includes four sections, and each section has a goal and a number of policies. And there are shoreline access and recreational opportunities, overnight accommodations and other visitor-serving uses, fishing and boating, and mobility and parking. And the chapter is also gonna include figures and tables, including existing and proposed public access and recreation facilities. And we included the tables, but the maps aren't ready yet for prime time, so I didn't include those, but we're hoping to bring those to you at your next meeting. And then it's also gonna include a bicycle facilities map for the coastal zone. So the first section, the goals, just like the 2040 general plan, they are statements that answer the question, what would we, what would we like to see? So the shoreline access and recreation section goal is a coordinated, safe, inclusive, and continuous public access and recreation system throughout the city's coastal zone. And there's 12 policies in this section. And in the draft document, there's, they're color-coded to help with review. So purple language indicates that it comes from the 2040 general plan. And red language shows that it comes from the Coastal Act. And this first section, most of the policies are being added to cover Coastal Act concerns. So I'm not going to go over the exact policy language in the interest of time. I'm just gonna summarize the policies. But again, the full text is in your agenda packet. So the first policy is about maximizing public access and recreational opportunities for all people. The second one is about maintaining and improving our connection to the shoreline. The next one's about wayfinding signage. Policy four is about requiring development to minimize and mitigate public access impacts. The fifth policy is about how in certain circumstances, new development that's between the first public road and the sea is required to provide public access to or along the shoreline. The sixth one is about prohibiting interference with the prescriptive rights of access to the coast. So what a prescriptive right is, is that under California law, under certain conditions, if the public has been using private property to access the coast for a long period of time, that use may result in the establishment of a permanent public access use. So that's what that means. Seven is about citing and designing and maintaining public access ways in a way that minimizes adverse impacts. For instance, to biological resources and surrounding property owners and safety. Eight is about completing and maintaining our segments of the California Coastal Trail, which is this goal of California to have a trail that goes from Mexico to Oregon along our coast. And Eureka has basically a complete segment of it across our whole coastline with this Elk River Estuary Enhancement Project, which is exciting. Nine, provide and maintain public access support facilities, like picnic tables and restrooms, and distribute them throughout the coastal zone. Ten is about maintaining shoreline access parking lots as free parking and maximizing hours of operation. And the figures that you haven't seen yet call out specific parking lots along trailheads like Hillficker and Truesdale and Del Norte Street. And they, and they say, and those are the ones that we're saying we're gonna keep free and available to the public. And the Coastal Commission is really concerned about public access parking along the shoreline because a lot of the coast of California, it's really unaffordable to live there. So most Californians can only access the coast by driving there and parking. So the Coastal Commission sees it as an environmental justice issue. And we're hoping that if we say we're gonna preserve these shoreline access parking lots, the Coastal Commission will be less concerned about public parking elsewhere in the coastal zone. Policy 11 is about reserving waterfront areas for water-oriented recreational opportunities where, where that's needed. And 12 is about providing sufficient parkland and recreational amenities to meet demand. The second section is about overnight accommodations and visitor-serving, other visitor-serving uses. The goal, what we'd like to see is a range of overnight visitor accommodation types and prices, and abundant free and lower-cost visitor-serving and recreational opportunities. And there are seven policies in this section. The first one is about protecting, encouraging, and providing lower-cost overnight visitor accommodations. This is a policy in the Coastal Act that the Coastal Commission has used to add policy language to other local coastal programs in other cities, basically requiring hotels to provide at least 25% of their rooms at a lower cost rate and requiring mitigation for any loss of any low, of any like budget hotel rooms. And Eureka doesn't have this issue of only having high-end hotel rooms. We actually don't have maybe enough higher-end hotel rooms, so we're proposing a policy instead about just evaluating our stock of hotel rooms. Anytime a new hotel is provoked, proposed, or the loss of a hotel is proposed, proposed, just to ensure that we continue to have affordable accommodations. The third policy is about encouraging hotels to incorporate visitor-serving and recreational amenities that can be used by the general public. The fourth one is from our 2040 general plan about attracting a regionally significant hotel on the waterfront. The fifth one is about encouraging vacation rentals while balancing the need for housing and about the possibility of imposing a cap. And the Coastal Act prioritizes visitor-serving uses, like vacation rentals, over housing, like permanent general residential development. So the Coastal Commission wants to review caps. They have approved caps, but they, they really look at them with scrutiny. So this policy is setting us up for a cap if, if that's the route we go. The next policy is about encouraging and prioritizing development that provides lower-cost or free visitor-serving and recreational opportunities. And the final one is right from the Coastal Act about prioritizing visitor-serving commercial development over other types of development. The third section is about fishing and boating. What we would like to see is water in landslide, landslide facilities adequate to meet the needs of the commercial fishing industry and recreational boaters, and educational and tourist activities celebrating our fishing economy. There's eight policies, supporting recreational boating and fishing, giving priority to commercial, to the commercial fishing industry in the Fishing Industry District, which is between the Marina and Sea Street and on Woodley Island, and only reducing space if demand no longer exists. So if we wanna, if four hotels want to go in on Woodley Island, they need to prove that the space is not needed anymore for commercial fishing. Three, support non-motorized watercraft and reduce potential conflicts with motorized watercraft. This was recommended by the Planning Commission, who reviewed these policies last week. Secure site and funding for a commercial cold storage facility. Limit new and expanded birthing facilities to Woodley Island, Eureka Public Marina, and the Eureka Channel in reach. Recognize the importance of commercial fishing and allow fishing-related noises and odors along the waterfront. Allow supplemental fishing-related education and tourism at fishing industry facilities. That policy is about increasing flexibility of use on coastal-dependent industrial land. There's gonna be more of those in the Land Use Plan Chapter. Encourage fishing-related uses in the coastal core area. So those are the fishing and boating policies. The last section is mobility and parking. The goal is an interconnected, continuous transportation network, offering safe and convenient mobility options to and within the coastal zone for vehicles, bicycles, pedestrians, transit, and other travel modes. There are 17 policies. The first one's about alternative modes of transportation. The second one's all about bus transit improvements. The third one's about requiring new development to contribute to the transit system. Four is about maintaining and enhancing coastal access bike, bicycle. Five is about requiring short and long-term bicycle parking. Six is about requiring bicycle and pedestrian access to and through projects and requiring new development to contribute to the citywide bike-ped system. Seven is to, about new developments, requiring new development to infill sidewalk gaps. Eight is about traffic calming. Nine is about exploring temporary and permanent pedestrian-only street segments in the coastal core area. 10 is about adding pedestrian and bicycle safety and connectivity improvements to Highway 101 and exploring the conversion of Broadway into one-way couplets. 11 is about addressing parking demand with context-based flexible parking requirements. So the rest of these policies are all about parking, and the point of that is that our, we want our coastal zoning code parking standards to look more like our inland zoning code parking standards. And this document's gonna be the standard of review for any amendment to the coastal zoning code. So we're setting the groundwork to have more flexible parking standards in the coastal zone. 12 is about addressing parking demand in the coastal core area with area-wide parking management strategies. 13 is about incentivizing dedicated spaces for EV charging stations and car pools and stuff like that. 14 is about minimizing driveway curb cuts, which are dangerous for pedestrians. 15 is about ensuring that any requirement, or any onsite parking in the coastal core area does not adversely impact the area's character. 16 is about not letting parking requirements get in the way of adaptive reuse of existing buildings, which they currently do in the coastal zone. And Planning Commission asked that we add a sentence to about waiving parking requirements for historically significant properties. And 17 is about discouraging parking between buildings and the street. And we're gonna be adding a bicycle facilities map. This is the current bicycle facilities map in the 2040 general plan. It's already outdated. Then the map for the coastal zone will just show the coastal zone and what we've heard so far during the waterfront-specific plan outreach process is that people really want more bicycle connections from inland to the waterfront trail. So that's something that we're gonna try to add to the map. And that's it. For me, so let me stop sharing my screen.
Great, thank you so much. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Arroyo?
Thank you very much. This is a lot. I have a question about, let's see. It's on page 14 of our document here, for Tac 14. PAR Tac 3.6, Birthing Facilities. It talks about limiting new or expanded birthing facilities, and it made me think about opportunities for collaboration with Cal Poly Humboldt or CR or future research institutions and whether they would need birthing associated with those potential new developments. I know that we don't know exactly what that'll look like yet, but that it's an area of interest. Would that be somewhere else in a different, a different section? Or do you think it should go in here?
Yeah, no, so you're asking, you're thinking maybe we would want a policy language about expanding birthing facilities for Cal Poly Humboldt use?
Yeah, I mean, this is limited to Woodley Island, Eureka Public Marina, or the Eureka Channel. Yeah, I mean, this is limited to Woodley Island, Eureka Public Marina or the Eureka Channel Inner Reach, which my understanding is that's the northern part of the water waterfront, right? Where we have like yacht mooring and stuff. I'm thinking about the, I suppose, the the western facing side of the bay and whether we want to also allow for birthing facilities there in anticipation that there could be future development there for a research facility.
You're right. We should make sure we allow birthing there. I, yeah, we can adjust the policy. Or maybe just remove it so that we're not limiting birthing to certain areas?
I don't, yeah, I don't see any reason to limit new or expanded birthing facilities. It's not like we're going to be like overrun with vessels desiring birthing. Well, maybe we would be, but hopefully not.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, I have a couple more, but I'll, I'll share. Do you want me to go ahead? Okay. And then with transit, with P A R Tac four point three developer improvements related to transit. It says require new development, dedicate usements, provide sheltered bus stops and or pay its equitable share contribution to the citywide transit system. I wonder if we can also include in there something about encouraging developers to buy transit passes for the people that are in that development. Is that something that would fit in there as well? Okay. I realize I'm framing my comments as questions and they're not. I'll, I'll hold the rest for comment time.
We've used that as an argument for parking variances, the development across most bagels. Use that as a reason to have a variance for parking.
I love that opportunity for parking variance as an encouraging transit. So it seems like that's very present in this document though. So that's really awesome. Thank you.
This is just a report, isn't it? So you can make comments. So you've got one more, don't you, or two? And then we'll move on to Councilmember Castellano.
I think I'm done, actually.
Councilmember Castellano?
All right. Let's see, thanks for this. I think my, I mostly just have a couple of comments just related to one of my favorite topics, art and culture. And that is, you know, I think it's implied in some parts of this document, but I think that there's an opportunity to kind of list it a little bit more clearly. I was thinking both under the visitor serving uses kind of area. So section two, maybe something, you know, cultural experiences is cited, but I thought it might be good to specifically talk about encouraging public art. And then in the earlier section, I was thinking of try, how to frame that in terms of you know, public access in recreational facilities or, you know, parks, but to talk about the cultural district. And maybe just culture and art. There's, you know, definitely, I think, opportunities within parks or, you know, throughout the, our shoreline area to, you know, have culturally relevant you know, artifacts or signage or, you know, public art or things of that nature.
So in parks promoting programming and facilities that speak to our cultural history or something like that?
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, and maybe, you know, and speak to our cultural history and and maybe something about the continuing cultural activities.
Do you have more? Are you good for now?
Yeah, I think that was, I just was
Councilmember Bauer? And then Arroyo?
It was funny because Councilmember Arroyo brought the exact thing that I was interested in was a limiting of new and expanded birthing facilities. I'm like, why would we do that unless there was, you know, impacts to natural resources, but I feel like if they want to, people want to come and stay in our bay, that would be, you know, fantastic. So no, I appreciate the great report. This is a huge amount of information for the public to digest and look forward to talking about it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Arroyo?
I did have one more and your comments made me think about it more. In addition to what Councilmember Castellano noted, I was thinking about specifically naming of public places and encouraging there to be diverse and representative naming of public places in the coastal zone. I know that's something that community members have reached out about in the past, that we don't have a lot of places named for historically significant women or, or people of color. So that we specifically make an effort to include our diverse history and our naming of, of coastal places.
Thank you. Councilmember Molton?
Everything has been, all my questions have been covered already. Thank you. Principal Planner Kenyon, that was very thorough.
Great, thank you. And I just would like to say thank you so much. I was looking over in her chair. Thank you so much for your report and I'm really, I'm really thankful to see that, again, cold storage facility is on here. I think that that's something we really seriously need to continue to move forward on. I know it's been a long time. We've been talking a lot. And I visited one last week with the Humboldt Girls Association. It was a great opportunity I'm going to talk about in a few minutes, but it can happen and it can be a really amazing thing for a wealth of different businesses in our region. So I'm hopeful we can continue and carry on that discussion. Any further questions or comments? Councilmember Arroyo?
Shocking. Okay, so I have a question about the bike plan, actually. Is this which was an attachment here, was it one of the, one of the maps that was attached? I'm seeing a class one trail that I don't recognize and don't remember hearing about between fourteenth and Myrtle through, I assume this is kind of through Cooper's Gulch, but I, I don't know that I'm familiar with this bike facility. It's saying it's, it's an existing class one trail.
I think there's some inaccuracies on the existing twenty forty bicycle facility map. I think the, like trails map was used to develop it. So there's a trail there, but it's not a class one bicycle facility. So I think when we amend the general plan to adopt this coastal element, we can also use it as an opportunity to fix the existing bicycle plan that, this existing map that's in it, but we also might just want to wait till our bicycle plan gets developed. That's just getting started right now to make a big fix to this map.
Great.
In the mobility section of the general plan.
Thank you. Yeah, it would be dreamy, but I don't think we have a class one trail there now. So I, but I hope that I was excited about this bike plan rendering or image plan view thing. I, I love the idea of all these expanded class one, class two and class three trails throughout the city. So this makes me excited to talk about our bike plan that's currently in development.
Thank you. Oh, we do. Okay. Is there anyone from the public who'd care to comment on this item? See anybody on Zoom? Okay, see.
Yes.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Latonya.
Did you say Latonya Jacob?
Yes, Latonya, you can go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say that my comments will be in the email.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Okay, any final thoughts or words? Okay. Thank you so much, everyone, and we'll move on to legislative action. Oh, we went there. We did. Future agenda items. Do any members of the council wish to propose an item replacement on a future agenda? Uh, Councilmember?
Just a point, did we announce that we removed the item F two?
Oh, pardon me, that's not, also not on my Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I apologize right here. So we are, I'm sorry if any of you've been here all night, but we are have pulled item I two, the Earth Center Agreement from the agenda and will not be discussed at tonight's meeting. Thank you for the reminder. Okay, so moving forward to future agenda items, I saw Councilmember Castellano had a hand up.
I, I think it may already be planned, but I just wanted to kind of formalize the request for kind of a, a report and update on the Core Hub. You know, there's a lot of moving parts to the community benefits work and the Core Hub and you know, the opportunities we may have with, with the wind and with wind energy and, and you know, and I think especially looking at the city of Eureka and infrastructure and things like that. So just some, some sort of report on that if folks are interested.
Can you see Councilmember Molton? Great.
Is it weird for me to thumbs up about this, given my recusal earlier?
Great. Okay. So we'll move forward to the city manager's report. Manager Slattery?
Good evening, Mayor Council. Just a really brief report and I don't want to steal any thunder. I know that the mayor is going to be bringing up a, a report on the outstanding community event that we had this weekend, but I just want to make sure that I get the thanks out there of the folks that really made this happen. Especially our city staff, starting with Executive Assistant Fazio and Assistant City Manager Powell. Spent a lot of effort in many meetings. I will say an equal amount, if not more effort, came from our Public Works Director Irving. E P D, Captain Stevens, Chief Jarvis spent an inordinate amount of time to making sure that this was safe for the public and reached out to many agencies that partnered in helping us do this. And I have a list of folks that I would like to thank. And I'm not seeing it in the email that was sent to me. So I will do it off the cuff. The Coast Guard was very important in this, obviously. Humboldt County Sheriff's Office was very important. We had a support from the Fortuna Police Department. Don't know if Arcata was there, but I believe for, oh, Arcata, sorry, Arcade, I still love you. Arcata Police Department. We also had a lot of support from you know, obviously the Blue Ox Mill Works and helping us with the okay, here's a better list. So from the DA's office, Alan Abushan, from the Fortuna Police Department, Justin Primafiori, Dalton Palmel, Bryce Sancho, Paige White and Thomas McLeod. From the Rio Del Police Department, Liam Burns, Cal Fire, Chan Bay. I should also mention Humboldt Bay Fire, of course, was very important in this. Sean, Chief Robertson was involved in the many, many, many meetings that unfortunately I was too busy to attend. And then, and so, and also Humboldt Bay Fire staff as well. Were onsite to provide paramedic services and any services that we needed from them. And also the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office, Ryan Derby, Jim Maury, Travis Rogers, Kyle Holt, Spellman Stallworth, Benjamin Filippini, Conan Moore, Raleigh Willoughby, Philip Dastal, Eric Losi, Sidney Arnold, Brian Booner, Hal Esgit, Chad Crotty, Justin Prior and Ephraim Sanchez. We also received support from C H P. Sean Morris, Officer Perch, Officer Mendoza, Officer Ross, Officer Telloin, Officer Bjork, Officer Keller, Officer Griffin, Officer Solis and Sergeant Walker. Wow, we had the Mendoc County Sheriff, holy cow. Mendoc County, Mendocino County Sheriff, that's impressive. Lieutenant Lorenzo, Sergeant Wyatt, Deputy McBride, Deputy Logan, Deputy Anderson, Deputy Chapman, Sergeant Vasquez, Sergeant Lima, Deputy Barter, Detective Del Fierantio and Lieutenant Caudio. And then, of course, from Humboldt Bay Fire, Chief Robertson, Assistant Chief Reynolds. God, I don't want to hack it. I don't know if Sitro's a battalion chief, no, but Tim Sitro, Benjamin William, John Goodman and Jeff Wood. City ambulance, and the obviously Jason Chan and their personnel that they provided for this. Obviously, the Coast Guard, Commander Sushenek. I don't know what the title means, but Robert Canepa and Dennis Vetrano. In San Francisco, Hale Allegretti, Alexander Miller, Shannon Cortez Millian, Tony Solares, William Harris and Brandon Henderson. And then District eleven from Waterways and Management, Mike Salzman and Tyrone Carter. And then Coast Guard aides to the Navigation Team in Humboldt Bay, Carter McGuire, Benjamin Alexa, Zivan Kaufman. And then from Humboldt Bay, Christopher Hinault, Garrett Hamilton, Casey Carlton, Connor Bond, Clive Huddelson, Commander Watch from Humboldt Bay, Josh Meeker, Jamal Igismore, Igismore. I hope I didn't hack that too bad. Sean Patrick Ramaha, Lindsay Richardson. And then Lieutenant Jihab Barnett. And then, of course, from E P D, Chief Jarvis, Captain Stevens, Sergeant Hill, Sergeant Lefranc, Sergeant Rabang. I think it's Sergeant Cernich, Officer Ross, Sergeant Wilson, Katie Hill, Manny Ramirez, Brittany Powell, Lynn Bailey, Kylie Nelson, Melinda Blaine, Victoria Graham, Officer Swanson, Officer Enzeli, Henrik Solto, Dustin Nance, Officer Marcelon, School Resource Officer Marcelon now. Raymond Newmanes, Abraham Jansen, Brian Wilson, Jeremy Solomon, Dove Skadron, Jamie Clark, Logan Myers, Chandler Baird, Corey Watson, Joanne Mel, Suzie Owlsley, Lori Montana, Mooney Higgins, Stan Terrace, come on. Stan? Stan is our ex facilities guy. I'll give him a hug next time I see him. Steve Anderson, Amanda O'Neil, Brittany Wilson, Jade Suits, Young Bunky, Julie Gerard and Mackenzie San. And then Ferndale P D, I didn't see them there, Chief Ron Sly, Tanner Gardner and Logan McNeil. And then from Cal Poly P D, Peter Cress and Janelle Jackson. Arcata P D, Don Arminio, Victoria Johnson and Officer Ratliff. Our I T department, Derek Howard. There was a lot of work that went into setting up the the emergency room over at the Aquatic Center. Cal Poly Humboldt I T, Ron Hornage helped with that. And then from Public Works, Director Irving, Cody Ferrera, Scott Elsmore, Matt Morgan, Robert Herrig, David Witter, Tim Wilson, Noah Kudris, Mario Zuniga, Brendan Mathias and Chaz Vickery. Community Services, we had Ray, Old Town Maintenance Worker, we had Come on, my boy.
Gordon?
Donald Wilks, Gordon Spawn from our Custodian. And obviously support from all of our Parks and Harbor staff. So anyway, thank you, everybody. It was a great weekend and a very successful event and it wouldn't have gone off as smoothly if it wasn't for all those folks. So it does take a village to make that happen and it was extremely successful.
Sarah Bareilles?
See, I'm going to leave that to the mayor.
And
It's the mayor's gig.
Humboldt Bay Fire, Mike Landry, Michael Landry was there.
He was, and I was, I saw him there as well, yes. And it's Battalion Chief Landry now as well.
Yes.
Congratulations, Michael. Oh, and then community development, I'm sorry, economic development. Sarah West, Amanda Kruške and Swan Asbury as well. And of course, every one of our council members was there to support as well. And Mayor Seaman had a little bit to do with it.
Transit Authority?
H T A, Greg Pratt.
Naming people, you have to name them all.
Anyway, that's my report and thank you to everybody to make that happen. It was super successful. We're having a debriefing Friday? Yep, and so we'll try and coax this to happen again at some point in time, hopefully. It may be Bauer as the lead act, but it should be a good time. Scooter Bauer, that's right. I thought, and I shouldn't bring this up, but I swear I did not talk to him at all before he called you Scooter Bauer.
All right, thank you for that illuminating report. No, thank you, everybody that participated and made this event happen and we're certainly getting a lot of positive response from our community and it'll be great to hear Mayor Seaman come back and give her full report moving forward. So now we're going to be moving on to our council reports. You do need a quick commercial break? So let's take a very quick commercial break, commercial bio break, and we'll be back in five minutes. So eight twenty-two. Council reports, we'll start with Councilmember Castellano.
All right, the moment everyone's been waiting for. You know, generally just going to regular meetings, HWMA, there continues to be kind of ongoing kind of movement in the world of addressing SB 1383, which is the compost bill. So, you know, I would imagine at some point there'll be something that comes before council related to that. And then, let's see, I will be traveling next week on my own budget, but kind of for a city-related item, which is attending the Cal, Cal Ford Economic Summit in Bakersfield. And then I attended the Daguru, the Daguru Louis Cultural Center opening day last week. And then also went out as part of the Witchway the Wind Festival, went out on the Matikit with Jerry Rhodey and Marnie Atkins and Alderon Laird and kind of just, it was an informational talk about the bay from a variety of perspectives. And that's, that's pretty much it. Cool. Councilmember Arroyo?
I thought I was going to have more time. That was unusual. Well, I, while we're naming people to think associated with this weekend, I have to say Murda Silva's art was on the backdrop and those side panels and that beautiful, beautiful backdrop. That was one of our local artists' paintings. And so how cool is that, that the backdrop was just like her art front and center? Very cool. So thank you, Murda Silva, for that as well. Let's see. Not a lot of new information from the Humboldt Transit Authority at this moment in time. Of course, we have the Earth Center and Transit Transit Center project moving forward, but nothing new to report there that's, that's fully cooked and ready to talk about. We do, we did have a really productive, I thought, meeting with Senator McGuire's local staff and, and one of his chiefs of staff, I suppose, talking a little bit more about housing strategies and how we can partner more with the state. So that was really good to see and I look forward to following up on those conversations. I got to be the auctioneer's MC. I wasn't actually auctioning at the North Coast Regional Land Trust Center and that was really fun. There've been lots of events. Events are coming back. It's, it's a lot. But in general, I'm you know, I've been really working my buns off and the community and all these other ways, wearing all these other, other hats. And sometimes I think we the community doesn't always see that we play all these other roles or people who watch these meetings perhaps don't realize how many roles we play in the community. And I really appreciate that some maybe bring it up as part of your council reports because it's who we are as people and what we contribute to in our community. So I've been I've been up to my ears in what I think is positive community work, but sometimes I just feel like I just don't get a chance to talk about it. So maybe at one of my last council meetings, I'll recap some of the projects I've been most proud of that I have done while being on the council, but not on behalf of the City of Eureka. So you all can, you know, wait for that juicy moment. Anyway, I'll end it there and I think that's all I have to report for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Moulton.
Hi there. Haven't done any traveling since the last time we spoke, but I've been, and I haven't had another two by two meeting with the chamber, but keeping up with them and their correspondence, I'm really happy to see them reaching out to the local businesses to help them connect with city resources, the sort of things that the city helps fund for building security and facade improvement, loans, different opportunities there for businesses. And that was a product of one of our meetings is that there's business owners who need these resources and the city is providing them or helping to, to connect them. And so the chamber is helping connect people with resources. You know, gotta love that. Just a general heads up, if you haven't noticed, there's an election coming up. I hope you know that already. If you are watching this part of a city council meeting, I'm assuming that you really feel strongly about local politics and you understand the impact it has really directly on our lives. And you can go to keep.org, the League of Women Voters does a fantastic voters forum. Totally nonpartisan and you can hear what everybody has to say, answer questions from the public and their own words. The Eureka City Council elections are both up there, wards three and five that are up for election. You can hear everybody's comments and answers all themselves. And then the reporter, county clerk, and registrar of voters is already up there on their YouTube channel. So go to keep.org and keep up. Listen to what folks have to say and get out and vote or mail in that vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
I don't want to retread the old ground, but the concert, I want to thank Sarah Bareilles, obviously, for coming back and giving back to her city. I'll say it was the most amazing event. And I ran into people I hadn't seen for years. I mean, it was like a gathering. It was like a reunion. Just that ability to see people that I haven't seen and it was and talk to so many different people. I appreciate that part. It really felt like a community and went off without a hitch and staff, you're all amazing for all you did to make that happen. And I won't list everybody's names, but I want to thank you all for putting together just an incredible event. My wife talks about it once a day, you know, she's just had such a great time. You know, I'll have a lot to report next, next council meetings, a lot of meetings coming up. I'll be going in November to Cal Cities meeting in Monterey, talk about our legislative priorities. Hopefully, everybody's taking the, or is going to take that survey on council. And yeah, I I guess about it for me. I had, I was gone for a week out in the woods and I missed my friends from the Bridge District. They had a meeting while I was out of town and I'll look forward to talking with them about their issues. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few things. So first, the first thing I want to talk about is I went to the North Coast Growers Association Farmer's Market, their food hub out in Arcata. They had a mixer out there and it is fabulous. It is fabulous. There's, they have cold storage. It's going to be an opportunity for farmers to come together like a one-stop shop where businesses can come out if they need a specific item instead of farmers having to deliver to a lot of different areas. And so it's, it's really going to be a great thing for our community and the people out there were just fabulous and just so welcoming and I really appreciate that. The second thing I wanted to talk about, and then I'll talk about something positive, but I just, well, the concert was positive, but I just want to remind people that now is a really, you know, recovering from COVID and just living our lives today can be very difficult. And so I just wanted to really put out the suicide hotline number, which is nine eight eight. You know, suicide's a permanent solution to a temporary problem. And I just had a family member kill themselves yesterday. So I just really encourage people to reach out and talk to each other. And you don't have to do it alone. You just don't have to. And then on a more positive note, I just, nine eight eight is the number. Call somebody, please. October 21st, coming up soon, is the return of the Tellawatt Island anniversary. And I too went to the opening of the, the new cultural center and it was, it's just going to be such a gift. I'm so grateful that we have the opportunity to work with the tribe on so many levels, continuing to make those amends and to make the positive impacts on our community that we are making. So with that, that's a real positive. It's a beautiful thing. It's a great memory and it's a memory that we're continuing to develop. So thank you. This meeting's adjourned.